All right, it's now thirty-one, so we gotta start to get this meeting going. But before we start it, I just want to say two things, if I can remember them. Well, the meeting's not going yet, it's like embarrassing myself. But it should be a good meeting because we have some interesting things. Certainly Wendy's here to talk about some interesting things. John always has some interesting things from Z E O. Kim has some things to say. Zone A, we talked a little bit about. The only thing that's not real exciting is reviewing section one. But we'll get on with the meeting. And one other thing is, obviously, you know I have a new computer. When my phone rings, it rings on my computer, so I'll have to mute myself if I hear that. Anyway, so let's get the meeting kicked off. It's Monday, June ninth, seven thirty P M. in Roxbury, Connecticut. What?
June thirteenth.
The thirteenth.
Oh, thank you. I had denied. Oh, that was a planning meeting that I missed. So I'd like to call a meeting to order of the Roxbury zoning commission and see the members. So today we have all our members, all our regular members, right? We have Kim, Elaine, Kim Tester, Elaine Curly, Alan Johnson, Jim Conway, myself, Bill Harrigan, and alternates tonight are all here. Candy Valeri, Cheryl Rosen, and Chris Hagerty. So I'd like to call a meeting to order, and the members are seated. And the first thing on our agenda is approval of the regular meeting of May ninth, two thousand twenty-two. So I'll toss that out there to talk about right now. Any comments, any changes or additions to?
Can I just ask if everyone has received the revised minutes that I sent?
Yes.
Yeah.
Everyone have that, so we're all on the same page there. Okay, great.
When did you send them, Karen?
I sent them late Friday after the other, after the agenda had gone out.
Okay, I have those.
There was that one paragraph missing from the minutes that I wanted to make sure you had.
And that paragraph is in the minutes now?
It is. It's in the revised. Yep.
Okay, what paragraph was that?
Is at the first paragraph on the top of page three.
Section one purpose?
Yes.
So that's in. That was.
I don't know how it happened, but when I looked the minutes over again, after I sent them down, I realized that that paragraph had gotten bounced somehow, so.
So the minutes are correct, with that in here now, correct?
Well, they're, from my point of view, they are. They still might be amended if people find mistakes or changes they would make, for sure.
Andy?
Yeah, one correction. On page three, zone A, fourth line down.
Yeah.
It should read bounds, as with most other towns. It would have to be done, so as not to penalize owners. Right now it says have to done.
Is it within that next paragraph?
Yeah, it's the paragraph that's zone A reads Chairman Harrigan noted that the phrase restrictive conditions is mentioned as zoning regulations under section two point three point four. He noted that problems created when zone C was changed from three to four acres. If the boundary of zone A is changed from a circle to meets and bounds, as with most other towns, it would have to be.
Be, okay, got it.
Done.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
How do you have that?
Okay, I have a correction.
Well, I didn't have a correction. I have the old one, I guess.
All right, there is, as I just heard that, meets and bounds. Meets is M E T S, not M E, not M E T S.
Say that again, Bill?
It's meets, M E T E S.
Okay, all right, thank you. For us insurance, okay, great, thank you.
Coming from the word metric.
Got it, got it.
So that's the only correction I see.
Thank you. Um, we'll put that in the dictionary.
Yeah, I had, I had just a clarification. And Candy, you had put in of, okay. So on page two.
We're flipping over.
Yep, page two, review of zoning regulations, section one, definition of character. The second paragraph, it says after discussion of the language recommended by the town attorney, the following definition was proposed and approved for public hearing. It was noted that horizon lines and as per legal definition. And Candy was deleting of, but I don't think it defines what as per legal definition has to do with it. So I was thinking of adding, and just saying, it was noted that horizon lines and as per legal definition.
It's of intensity.
Yes, to clarify.
Definition of intensity.
Yeah, it's just, it's being, being added to clarify the meaning of the word intensity.
Right.
Yeah.
Definition of intensity.
Yeah, I think it should be definition of, and then you close the parentheses, intensity.
Oh, put the of inside.
Okay, as per legal definition of.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Well, but, but the part, the part we're quoting is as per legal definition.
Right, exactly.
It's a real weird little technicality there.
It is.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, this is a sentence that just is stating what is being added. The sentence, I think, should clarify that, that what's in the parentheses, as per legal definition, has to do with the word intensity, because it doesn't say anything about that. And so we're kind of like, what?
Jim, do you want to add a few words that would?
Yeah.
Would clarify that? I'll start to take them down if you want to do that.
Okay.
Well, what if, if we eliminate the parentheses?
No, you can't.
No?
No.
We gotta stand it off as what's being added.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the definition section, it's fine the way it flows.
Yes, but this is a sentence that talks about the addition of these two pieces. What are the red line and?
Yeah, but if we, if we leave what's in parentheses out, it would state, it was noted that horizon lines and of intensity will be added.
Why can't we put the as, why can't we put the?
Candy, of intensity isn't being added. It's as per legal definition is.
No, 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 I, I, yeah, I know that. But if we take out as per legal definition, okay? That sentence will read, it was noted that horizon lines and of intensity will be added.
But I don't have the word of anymore.
But that's not the case.
Not correct.
That's not correct information, though.
Right, right. We're not adding that.
No.
Adding intensity.
Intensity is already there. We're only adding as per legal definition to help clarify the word intensity, which is already in the, in the definition. So just maybe saying as per legal definition, which will help clear, which will be used to clarify the meaning of the word intensity.
How about if we just take intensity and put it and intensity as per legal definition?
Right, that's what I just said. That's what we did in the second paragraph. That's what we did at the, the last line of the second paragraph. Appearance and intensity as per legal definition. Just put the parenths after.
Yeah.
I see, so that.
So just remove the parentheses?
No.
No, I would, I would guess, I would guess in a way, in a way.
Well.
It's we have it very clearly defined in that next paragraph that.
Right.
Yep, we're probably okay to just leave this.
Okay.
Okay, that's.
At least at some point it's being clarified. But it's up to you guys. I don't mean to.
I, I can see, I can see just swapping word, word intensity is, that makes sense. And because it's not underlined.
Okay, so tell me how, how you want to do that?
So I think it's right what, what was just mentioned. So horizon lines and intensity as per legal definition. And so the only two parts of this that are underlined, those are the ones that are being added. So at least.
All right, no, that's.
Makes sense. That was a good suggestion.
Much easier.
Yeah, yeah.
We're golden. That's good.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other changes or corrections? That may be sweat.
Sorry, Bill. It's intense. Sorry.
Okay. Oh, so the minutes of last month's meeting are correct now. Is that correct? So shall we make, have, get a motion to approve last month's meetings?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
This is Elaine, I'll second.
Have a second for that?
Elaine.
Elaine, this is Elaine, I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. opposed? All right, so we've accepted the minutes of May ninth, two thousand twenty-two meeting, minutes of the meeting of the Roxbury zoning commission last month. All right, next on the agenda, public comment. There's no public comment, is there, Karen? We talked about it, but.
No, there isn't.
Yeah, so.
We, we spoke about the possibility we should, we could have.
We put Wendy on.
Could have put Wendy on it in that, but we didn't, so. She has her own spot on the agenda, so.
So, next thing, Z E O report, John.
Hello, everyone. John Cody, I have to apologize for my internet. I love Spectrum. They've been here twice, and I can't seem to figure out what's going on with it. But anyway, we, I believe we've had two new houses come through wetlands, which finally got through approval, which is good news for the town. We've had numerous generators, like always. The one, oh, the one thing that I have to bring up was there was a, I had to tell someone to stop work on a project that they were doing down on Weller's Bridge. They were constructing a stone fence made of masonry, brick, concrete mortar, all that. And it was within a setback. I went through the regs every which way to see if it was somewhat possible. And it just came down to where I had to deny them. They decided they're going to bring this up to Z B A, so Julie, enjoy that. That pretty much sums it up. If anyone has any questions or anything, please fire away.
So the reason it was rejected, John, is because it was within the setback?
Uh, yeah, Elaine, know what it was? It was a, it was a large brick and mortar wall well within, it was a non-conforming house, well within the setback. There really was nothing we could do about it. You could allow fences and stone walls. But this, this pushed the limit way too far. It was, you know, six by nine concrete blocks, bricks and everything. I just, I couldn't do much with it.
John, you're behind the hedge, right? If, it's been denied, it's not our action, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, I looked at it, and I gave them the option to go to the Z B A, which they apparently are going to do.
So if we talk about it at this meeting, should we not talk about it because we know where the address is?
Bill, it's fine, because it came to our attention. They had no permits to begin with. Went there, talked to contractors, talked to the homeowners. Everything went smoothly. We tried every avenue we could find to help them get what they want, and it just wasn't feasible.
Discussing it now is just informational for us.
Yeah. Why was it denied? Sure, that's part of our concern.
Yeah, no, it was denied, but it was, it's out of our hands. It's, as far as we see it, it's done and buried. We don't have anything more. They, they agree.
Can, can I ask a question?
Oh, please.
Okay, John, did they, they never applied for a permit?
Correct.
So we didn't have.
Jim, I'm sorry, let me correct myself. Initially, there were no permits taken out. I went there, I talked to the contractor, told the contractor to stop work, have the, have the homeowners reach out to me, which they did. They gave me some applications, some diagrams and drawings. And after that fact, you looked at everything, and it was beyond, beyond what we can approve, what I can.
So, so you did have something to deny?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, no, this, I just shortened it up, yes. They came back with applications, all that, it's denied.
Because they can't go to Z B A unless they make a formal application for us to deny?
Anyone can go to Z B A at any given time, but this one, we're just rock solid. They came in, talked to them, they came back, made a fee, we returned the check, et cetera.
Yeah, okay.
Great.
Any other questions on John's report?
Something like this, is it prudent for John or Bill or any member of the zoning commission to be present at the Z B A meeting to express our concerns?
Well, Jim, I can answer that, because when it comes to me, I deny it. Because I denied it, I have to give a report to the Z B A with the, with the rationale of why it was denied.
Right, okay.
Rather simple.
Yep.
Regs and all that, so we're, we're good.
John, Julie has the information, and she passes that report along to the, to the Board of Appeals?
Yeah, but what happened now is they haven't applied to Z B A. I told them to be in touch with Julie. I work with Julie on this. Any information that needs to be passed back and forth, it's an open book. There, there's no concern.
Okay.
Well, hopefully, with all this done and said, the word safety has to be part of it.
Um, yeah, well, that's not in our regs, but it clearly.
Well, no, zoning, our purview for zoning is safety. Right in the beginning, everything we do is supposed to be based on safety.
Well, I was just looking at this as far as the structure being within the setback.
Correct.
It was, that's the avenue that I'm focusing on.
Yep, and it's a totally unsafe situation. They couldn't give a variance. It's very unsafe.
But that's a good, very good point, Jim, because that's a nasty turn. Nothing could stop a car from careening right to that metal fence, right into the gathering. It's at that patio that was proposed, so safety is certainly something that Z B A should, should consider.
Consider.
I can certainly bring it up with, with, then when it comes up.
Yep. All right, anything else, John?
Uh, that seems to be it.
All right, so, thank you very much.
No, no problem, thank you.
Next, Wendy. Wendy's got, I think, some very interesting things for us to think about, or a thing for us to think about, and it's worthy of thinking about. So I know one of the houses that is at risk right now, and certainly, Wendy, you just, you just presented this, and.
Well, thank you for putting me on the agenda, because we had a great meeting with your fearless leader, Bill, and it was interesting to have the H D C, the Historic District Commission and the zoning commission around one table to understand things that often come up at our meeting, and I didn't really know what it was. But Bill explained dividing the zones by using property lines rather than the circles, which we all endorsed and really liked the change. And then we were trying to understand the twenty-five percent expansion allowed on non-conforming buildings. And it seemed, well, after Bill left, we started talking about it, and we were like, oh, my gosh, that means every historic building that's non-conforming, you really can't build on the back all that much. And so we started looking at some of the homes in the historic district, which already have additions on them. I mean, some, simple ones, like even the town hall, that, that is definitely not fifty yards, I mean, you know, from the front. It does, it's non-conforming. Yet we built in addition onto that, that was more than twenty-five percent. And with this new zoning, correct me if I'm wrong, because I could totally be wrong on this, but with just the twenty-five percent, and you could expand upwards, would be very limiting to any historic house, not including the historic district, but what you find all over Roxbury, because the older houses were built on the road similar to the barns. But it wasn't until I got a letter from a real estate agent, because we now sent out a letter to every agent that's selling a house that's in the Roxbury survey, to let them know that they can't tear anything down unless they, it's approved by us. And the only thing we can say, no, we don't approve of it, but it's a ninety-day delay, demolition delay. So we don't have really much jurisdiction, but in those ninety days, we sometimes find a solution or talk them into it. But this real estate agent said to me, what about that twenty-five percent add-on? He goes, I have a property on the market now for two point seven million. It's on Old Roxbury Road, and it has beautiful barns that are all non-conforming. And it has a house that is also non-conforming, because it's not fifty feet back from the road. And they want seven bedrooms. And when I explained this new ruling to them, they said, oh, well, we'll just tear down the old house and build a new one. So it's like, whoa, wait a minute. This law, instead of helping preserve some of the older homes, is actually, could be working against it, since Roxbury has become such a desirable location for people with a lot of money, so. I do have some visuals I could show you, if I could share my screen. I don't know if that's possible here. Do you want me to try it, or does anybody know about it?
Wendy, they be visuals of what?
Well, I have some ground plans that I could show you what I was talking about a little more clearly, if anybody needs some more information, basically.
Yeah, well, right away, you have our attention right now, is what you're saying.
Okay.
So not, not that we don't want to hear more.
Okay, well, I don't have to share the screen. I can actually talk about them. But within the historic district, say like the Congregational Church, that church is right up against the road. There's no way any addition could be made to it with this new zoning amendment. But what happened is they put the connector building in the back, and they moved the chapel over and attached to it. And it fits all rather nicely within the historic district, and it, it's a great addition to, to our little town, you know, and it, it solved the problem for the past and the future, so that people could use the space easily. That couldn't happen anymore. You know, that, that could not be accomplished if that church wanted to add on. All they could do was have like this, you know, something that went up high behind it, which is also in the river, so that wouldn't have worked anyway. And there's, there's lots of examples of that all over town. And we kind of came to the, if, if I'm interpreting this correctly, I'm not sure that I'm totally, it's totally correctly, but we decided that it's really the twenty-five percent limitation could be, it seemed to be like working against historic houses rather than making them. Yeah, and a lot of historic houses are non-conforming, but it's working against saving this non-conforming building, because today's uses are different than what they were in historic times.
I have a question. So before, like during the, for the church renovation, I remember it, but I wasn't on a board then. So did they, Jim, you might remember, with something like that, would they have gone to Z B A directly? No?
Z B A is not hardship. I mean, it wouldn't be a hardship for the church. Z B A, I think, has to make all the decisions based on hardship. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I think so.
I remember how I.
I'm sorry, it wasn't hardship back then.
No, right?
It was exception. I, that, that's what I observed.
Well, Wendy, I think what we did when we made that regulation is we did apples and oranges. We used a basis of footprint, but we let that transition into a living space. So if the footprint, the footprint was controlling, if, if the footprint was three hundred feet, that's, you can't have three hundred feet on the first floor, and three hundred feet on the second floor, and a hundred fifty feet on second and a half floor. It's controlled by footprint, but it applies to living. Am I, does everyone agree with me on that?
Yeah. That's, that's correct. I'll, I'll jump in here anytime you folks want me to. But this whole thing, prior to the twenty-five percent, prior to that, you had zero, okay? You had nothing, no expansion on a non-conforming house. So what came to the zoning commission a few years back, I'm guessing five, was a family, elderly couple, that wanted to put a bathroom on the first floor. The only bathroom they had was on the second floor. And it required a bit of a bump out, and they couldn't do it, because zoning regs said no expansion of non-conformity. So the zoning commission looked upon this family, not only that family, but a family that bought a house with two bedrooms, they had more children, wanted to put on another bedroom for the more kids, and they couldn't do it. So the twenty-five percent was basically to allow for a minor expansion, for minor purposes of a downstairs bathroom, another bedroom, just as your family grew, without encroaching upon the neighbors, the neighborhood. They're changing the whole streetscape by huge expansions and turning it into a greenwich right alongside the road. So the twenty-five percent was the number that we came up with to kind of go with the size of the house. Three thousand square foot house, eighteen hundred square foot house. The twenty-five percent is a different size addition, obviously. We thought it was adequate to allow people to do small bump out additions to accommodate their growth. That was it.
Well, I know where Wendy's coming from. I personally tore down a historic house at Hybrid Road, because it was non-conforming, it was rotten. I mean, it would have been cost prohibitive to fix it. But tearing houses down is certainly something that happens more and more frequently now. I know Wendy was talking specifically about a house on Old Roxbury Road. Is that correct, Wendy? You're, you're muted, Wendy. You're, you're muted. Wendy?
It's eighty-eight Old Roxbury Road. I do have a, a plan of it, if you want to see it, so.
Yeah, I mean, I hate to think that someone, someone's trying to hold us hostage.
It's the one by the pond, right? With the beaver pond in the back?
It has the white barns that go in a U shape.
The U shape, yeah.
Right, in a Greek revival house next to it, and maybe another little building on the property, so.
Beautiful old house.
It's beautiful. Died supposedly, but whatever that means, so.
I asked, do you have a guest estimate of what the current square footage is? Or, or footprint size? Just, just out of curiosity, to, to review this kind of possibility.
I don't, but I'm sure we could find one on, you know, Realtor dot com.
I'm on Zillow right now, and it says thirty-six twenty-three.
Wow. Well, that's nine hundred feet. Well, no, no, no. We don't know what the footprint is.
What, well, the foot, but for thirty-six hundred square feet, it might be, what, like forty, forty-two, or forty by forty-five, something like that, to get, to get to thirty-six hundred?
Yeah, but it's.
Can't be much more than that.
It's a multi-story house.
Yes.
Correct.
The footprint is only half of the living area.
You're about eighteen, nineteen hundred.
Yeah, a footprint which would give you four hundred and fifty feet of living space, is that correct? Nine, yeah, twenty-five percent of that. Now it'd be living. No, the footprint. I think, I think the, I think the concern is warranted, because we don't want to see old houses go. But, you know.
But keep in, keep in mind what I originally said. The purpose of this reg wasn't to save old homes.
Exactly.
The purpose of this reg was for the growing families and the elderly couple that wanted a bathroom on the first floor. That's, that was the bottom line. We didn't know, we didn't have to go bigger than twenty-five percent for a bathroom on the first floor.
Could that be history? Could that be water over the dam? Could we? Could we? I, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm just kind of mulling this out loud. Could we have a special exception for houses 150 years old or older?
You would have to have a petition to amend the regulation as it reads. And you have to come up with a petition to amend the regulation. And then we would look, put it out to public hearing and take a look at it.
Okay.
Um, I have two suggestions. Um, I don't know if you're all familiar with the, the Roxbury survey, which was done by architectural historians. And they went through every single property in town and chose the ones that complied with federal standards to be in this book. And we use that book, the, the building department uses that book as the bible as to when somebody comes in and wants a demolition. They say, oh, you have to talk to the historic district department to see if you can have that demolition. So we basically assess, oh my gosh, you can't tear that down. And we put in the 90 day, which actually sometimes works, sometimes doesn't work. But um, that's the only protection we have for it. I was just thinking maybe the zoning, I, I understand you have to go through many steps to do that, but possibly this could be used for zoning exceptions.
Many steps, it sounds like the first step would be a petition. Jim, how many names would have to be in that petition? I don't know.
It's, it's not a lot of names, but what the zoning commission has to receive is the verbiage, the actual written amendment as to whose petitioning.
Like the Carter barn.
Yes, you gotta write down what you want us to approve. And we take exactly what you written to public hearing. We don't tweak it. You know, the person that's petitioning for amendment gives us the verbiage and we take that to public hearing. And uh, if it goes the way they wrote it, then it's still up to us. I mean, after that, we tweak it. But we don't tweak, we don't change what they uh, uh, provide us as an amendment.
Can't we, can't, can't we look at what someone submits and then, and then make?
You can't change it until it goes to public hearing.
I have one question about that. Um, the HGC is a government, is a certified government, meaning that we share the same concerns that you do, basically. And so therefore, if we were to write a regulation, we don't have your zoning experience. And we would have to use Gail McTaggart as our attorney. And we, it, it would be easier if we could work together somehow and come up with a way. And then we could present it because.
Basically, I'm just explaining the process from my past experience. And the process is, you know, I think I can tell you right now, Gail won't take you on. You would have to acquire your own attorney to write the amendment to make the changes. Um, unless the zoning, I don't believe the zoning commission can amend a reg without, I suppose we could, without a petition to amend. And you give us what you want it to say.
What I'm saying is we don't have your zoning expertise. I think it would be really helpful to work together on something like this.
Well, tell me the change, write down the changes you want to be made.
Well, here's another suggestion somebody made, and I have no idea if this makes any sense at all because I don't, I'm not really well versed in zoning. But someone at the committee, in the committee said, why don't we do, um, when the addition is in the nonconforming area, then the 25% stands. But if you can make the addition fall completely in a nonconforming area, then there would be no limitations. Bridgewater does something like that.
We have that before.
Sorry, I, see, I don't follow. That easily. So it's very hard to say we're of the same government in the same town. And yet, without any zoning background, we're going to have to write a a reg for you to say yea or nay to. It's kind of hard.
The problem I have with this as a member of the commission is the, the initial intent of the reg is totally getting lost, totally getting lost. Now we're writing a reg to allow people to expand to seven bedrooms on a nonconforming house. When all, we wrote this reg so somebody could put a bathroom on the first floor. Prior to that, prior to that, there was nothing.
I know, but I think that possibly, uh, I mean, I don't really know. Like I said, I'm not, the 25%. Where did you come up with that figure? Is that, that sounds a little arbitrary to me also that you could just say 25% because possibly at this point, most of the houses have additions. And I'm talking mostly the historic district only because I know it better. But um, it seems like it's almost against a historic house. You know, you're limiting to 25% for a bathroom, but you don't know what the needs of that are.
Prior, prior to our regulation, there was 0%. And yes, everything is arbitrary. Everything is arbitrary. We picked 25% because it's 120, it's one quarter of the footprint. If you had a, a nonconforming house with a 3,000 square foot footprint, which, you know, some of them do 2,000 easy. 25% of that's a pretty 500 square foot. It's a big chunk. Anyway, we just want, we're thinking of the neighbors as well and thinking of the neighborhood and changing the streetscape and a great big huge addition. So we kept it at 25% just to allow for the extra bedroom or a downstairs bathroom. And that was the intent. But prior to that, there was no percentage.
Do you want to see, Elaine has her hand up. I don't know if you can see that on your screen.
She go, I don't see her.
Thank you. What I, the first thing I'd like to say is I understand Wendy's concerns because at, at one point in time, it really wasn't a, a typical practice to go and do tear downs. Okay, people generally, you know, rehabilitated antique homes. Today, it's not even a question because of the money. Okay, so I do, I appreciate that comment. And the, the second thing is, um, does anybody know? I, I mean, are there that many houses out there that are 100% nonconforming? Because I know we kicked this around a few months ago. But most of our homes have, like for me, my front is nonconforming. My 317 side is nonconforming, I believe. So why wouldn't I be able to go out the other way is what my question would be.
Well, you're on a corner a lot.
Yeah.
So you, technically, you can't move away from the nonconformity. If you move back, you're, you're paralleling 317. If you move sideways, you're paralleling 67. So I think you have an exceptional situation like the bottom of Wellis Bridge Road. I, 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 you know, correct, someone correct me if I'm wrong. The, uh, a, a, a corner house can only be, a nonconforming corner house can only be modified vertically. Not any, any more of a footprint.
And the other thing is you look back at the regs and you cannot make something that's nonconforming more nonconforming.
That is correct.
And if only five feet of your house is in, within the setback, the whole house is nonconforming. And our regs state that you can't make it more nonconforming.
Okay, so you're working with the pretense that if any of it is 100% is. Where my L, technically my kitchen L is conforming because it doesn't impede upon any of the setbacks.
Right, but it's attached to the whole house.
It's attached to the whole house. Okay, thank you.
You couldn't do that now with this 25% thing. You would not be able to put that addition on. Another example that I was going to show you visually, and I hate to use the current owners, it's Five Church Street. It's Ken Allen's house. He has a Greek revival that's definitely nonconforming and it goes back. He ended up putting a connecting piece to his garage and an addition in the back with a, a new kitchen. None of that would be possible now. None. It seems like you're, you're keeping, you're, there's a prejudice against old houses because they're nonconforming.
So did that go through ZBA? I mean, how did that happen?
Well, I don't know if ZB, I mean, you just, I don't know zoning, but you just told me that you just didn't have any um, regulations at one time and you put in the 25%. So maybe it was before when you didn't have. I know it went through the historic district committee.
Is it something that we could change by defining what nonconforming is? And, and limit it to what, whatever is the nonconforming part that you can increase? Say it's 10 feet of the, the house is in the setback. That you can't, you can't modify that at all, but the parts that are not in the setback are conforming and allowed to be changed.
What happens with that, Chris, in the zoning circles is you have a, a tiny little house built on the side of South Street just below Apple Lane. And it was a nonconforming house. They did get a variance. And they increased the size of that property, that house three times. And it became a McMansion. And it's attached and it's 10 feet from the road.
We all know that house and that's, that's a good example.
See, the unfortunate alternative to that is that they'll take down the small house and they'll just build the McMansion anyways.
50 feet back, yes.
Right.
Wendy, is there a, is there a term that can be used to say if someone, if, if there was some regulation modified and someone's could put an addition on, that they couldn't build a glass house painted purple or something like that? Is there a term that bolsters or adds to the clarity of the definition of an, an old house?
It's appropriateness.
That's the word that we use in the historic district is when somebody wants to change the house, we are able to determine if it's appropriate or not. And that usually goes for the design so that the design, such as Ken Allen's house, does not overwhelm the house even though it's just about double the original house. So.
Your idea would, if, if you had a petition and created a hypothetical modification to the current regulation, you have verbiage that would, you would put in that modification, a restriction on the, the appearance of the house.
No, not necessarily because I mean, that is a major job. Um, when you buy your house in a historic district, you are, you know, that's determined in the beginning that you agree to the fact that the commission is going to have say over what you do. But in order to do all the historic houses in this town, that, that's kind of a that's a, a big job, I would say. But not, I guess it's could be a consideration, but I'm just not sure what the wordage, the verbiage should be because I don't know what, what I'm trying to do is save old houses. I don't know what the zoning commission is trying, I don't know. I don't want to sound flip, but it sounds like they're just interested in bathrooms.
Yeah, yeah, basically. Because before that, there, you couldn't even put the bathroom on. And now you're complaining about, we're given permission to put an extra bedroom on and you want more. But anyway, no, I'm, I'm good with it. And no, zoning, zoning regs cannot tell you what color to paint your house. The historic commission might be able to do that.
Oh, they cannot do that.
But zoning, we can't tell you what color to paint it. We can't tell you how to build it. We just have setbacks and footprints and.
Yeah, but tell me why, I know I heard you in the beginning, um, Jim, say about safety, safety. And I agree with that. And I agree with, I understand the reason for the 50 foot, you know, setback and the 30 foot setback because a, a car, an automobile could go through it. But what is the safety reason for 25%?
We didn't have safety in mind. 25%.
You're, you're keeping people's rights to a minimum when they buy an old house.
Wendy, I'm going to interrupt for a minute because I want to tone this down a little bit. I think it's important.
Sorry, I have a.
I know, I understand.
It's just my, um, passion and I get, that's, my family complains too.
That's okay. No, no. So because I was.
I'm still good.
I'm still one of the primary writers of that nonconformity, so I can, uh, talk about the 25%. In our regulations, we had already, uh, in prior years, many years before, 25% was used in other nonconforming building sections of our regulations. So we wanted to make it uniform. So that's where the 25% came from. So the building, the, uh, commercial area was 25%. Um, there, there was another section that was 25%. So we just made it the same as what was already existing. That's why it's 25%. It doesn't mean that it has to always stay 25%. Uh, the zoning regulations are something that is sort of ebbs and flows over time. And, um, the discussion is always very important to have and we need to know what you think and, um, but I wanted you to understand where that came from. So.
Well, Wendy, there, there is an avenue for you. The petition, uh, a proposed modification. You can't use Gail McTaggart, but that is an avenue that's open to you. You know, that, that could be drawn up by you. It might take a little while. And then you present it to us and then we would review it. And, uh, uh, so that's, I, I think that you have to take.
I, I understand. What I don't understand is we're representing the town of Roxbury and we're representing the town of Roxbury, although our jurisdiction is really owned over the historic district. I, I don't know how we can write a zoning reg for the entire town.
I, I think it would be good to just clarify with a town attorney what the process is, if it really has to be written by someone outside or if any legal, um, changes have been made through the state to make sure that that is.
Well, I can tell you right now that anybody can scribble down on a napkin. Okay, an amendment to a regulation. And basically we have to accept that and we have to take the verbiage of what they scribble down to a public hearing. And you take it without changing any words whatsoever and see what the public thinks of their amendment. Now, the whole historic commission can write something down. It can be very short, two sentences. And we have to take that as an amendment to our regs to a public hearing. After that, then it's open fodder for the commission to look into. But what they put down on paper, we have to submit to a public hearing.
So basically you're just saying if, if we want to have this discussion and then we should probably do, the amendment would enable a town discussion so that we could get other opinions on what would be beneficial for our town.
Oh, yes. When it goes to public hearing, you submit the amendment to the zoning commission and we accept your amendment to a regulation. And we forward that, we move on through a motion to have a public hearing for that amendment to regulation XXX. And, um, and we see what the public has to say about it, then the commission decides.
I thank you very much. I, I understand that avenue. I feel intimidated by it, but I suppose I could. I just basically wanted to to bring this to the zoning commission for fodder for you to talk about too. Because I think in making that 25%, it does seem like it works against history.
Well, that's perfectly, um, your opinion and we like that. But you have to go through the process to bring the opinion to the commission through the public hearing um, avenue. And then we, it's up for discussion. There's no.
I was, I'm just presenting it and now if I want to work, want to go forward, then I have to write something down.
I think so. Yep.
I think that's a realistic approach, Wendy. I think, you know, there's.
I didn't quite understand, I mean, the fact that I know, I don't think anybody in, on our commission has any zoning, enough zoning knowledge to make it worthwhile. I know when the Cardis did, they hired their own lawyers. We are not capable of doing that because.
You don't need to, don't need to. You don't have to have a lawyer write this. We'll accept what you write.
That, that's a little less intimidating. Thank you.
Oh, God, yes. You don't need an attorney. Please. You write something down. And maybe I'm speaking out of line, but I'm speaking from past. You write something down, submit it as an amendment to the certain regulation number, whatever it is. And then we immediately have a public hearing to see what the public thinks about that. Then we tweak it or discuss it or whatever. We don't change a thing before we go to public hearing.
Okay, great. I, I thank you for your time and I thank you for being invited to be able to speak to it because it was confusing when we were presented with it. And the more we conversed about it, the more we realized it targeted historic houses specifically because of the setback rules.
Correct. It does. But, okay.
Okay. Thanks, everybody for listening to. And if I got out of hand, I really appreciate, I'm really sorry, but I. I get emotional and my voice rises, so.
Wendy, your concerns have a lot of merit and we are thinking about it.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you very much and I'm going to leave you to your business. So thank you so much. Thank you.
That leads us to the next item on the agenda is review zoning regulations, section one, purpose, which is what we went through checkmarks last meeting over. And you know, let's do some, let's get some more things checked off. Everyone went away. Let's get some more things checked off. It doesn't mean we approve these things. I, I was going to make a comment at the end if we got all the checkmarks done. I think as we review these things and check, okay, okay, okay. That doesn't mean that we're going to submit it the second we approve it. I think we should work these things over and do nothing except think about them till a subsequent meeting. Because a lot of things relate to objectivity versus subjectivity now. And I objectively think that Roxbury is a different town than Hampden or New Britain. And it appears to me, I mean, we're kind of held hostage, I guess. We have P O C D, we have steering committee. It seems like Public Act 2129 that's been signed into law holds us hostage and forces us to build affordable housing, which can't happen because we don't have the infrastructure, period. That won't happen. No one's going to do it because it costs too much. But I've heard that the state could push us around and give us trouble with grants. That's how they could put some teeth into enforcing Public Act 2129. So when we go through all these things, these sections that we do and check them off, I think we should go through them a second time. That sounds like a more thing to do, but to make sure that the things we check off really relate to Roxbury. And so I might be out of line, you know, talking about the state that way, but it doesn't. It's kind of hard to think that Roxbury and New Britain or New Haven can be treated the same. And it, it seems to me that's the subjective. The, the state wants a uniform centralized zoning regulation for the whole state and the whole state is not the same.
I think what we can do is just make sure that, you know, you're right, that it's written in a way that meets the requirement that the state has for us to put these in and to just make sure that it's interpreted appropriately for our town.
If we put our sincere best effort into our checkmarks here, we're, you know, we're certainly going along with their wishes for P O C D and a plan, steering committee and a plan. We're, we're going along with them, but you know, it doesn't mean we should just roll over and lay dead for them. So, you know, I hate to think of going through all these things and analyzing the check, checkmarks, but you know, there are some things that say they want to, you know, the state. If I have this right. You know, is to eliminate the town's concern for congestion. We don't want to open ourselves up to that. So I guess if we could, seriously, earnestly, we'll continue down this list of checkmarks and see what's automatically okay, but when we get all done checking things off, we should review what we checked off. So.
But where did we come off?
What's that?
13 was the last one we did, so we're starting with 14.
We need the other page.
Okay, to ensure promoted energy efficient patterns development, student generation, freestanding.
And question.
We, go ahead. Who's talking?
It's Candy. In 1.3.10, what's that two? Is that it? In the last time we saw it? At the end, there's a two.
Where, you're on page one?
Page one, yeah. 1.3.10.
The numeral two.
The number two, yeah. That might have been a typo.
1.3.2?
No, 1.3.10. There's a number two at the end.
To promote the health, safety and welfare?
No, to regulate the height, number of stories and size of buildings and other structures. Semi-colon two.
Is that delimited to two stories?
I don't know. I don't know what that two means.
Wendy, I'll have to go back and look and see what we, the one we used last month. I don't remember that, seeing that on.
Yeah, I mean, I.
It looks to me like it's a typo, but.
Yeah, it does look like a typo.
Yep, it does.
I, I can check on that.
Okay.
I still don't know which one we were talking about, Candy.
1.3.10.
And first page. About halfway down the page.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Near the bottom. Has a two. It's just floating out there.
And the end of the sentence has a two and it doesn't make sense. Yeah.
Well, that's not for 1-3-11. That looks like a question mark.
Oh, is it a question? No.
No, it's a two.
Okay.
Sometimes when we, if we're forced to scan these documents, weird things show up in them. I know that. That you don't always catch.
All right, so we'll have to clarify that when we, we get all our checkmarks done, we'll review what we questioned. So should, should we start now and start with 14? We, we read these and if they're offensive or to encourage energy efficient patterns, develop uses, true generation, freestanding, solar, wind. We have windmill regulations, do we not?
Yes.
And they're limiting, are they not?
Yeah, I think, I think it's right now if we're just looking at 1.3.14, this sounds fine.
Sounds what?
It sounds fine. I mean, we can go back into our regulations and then, you know, make adjustments to things to make sure it's what, the regulation is what we want. You know, for me personally, I, I don't have a problem with this.
I don't either, but it doesn't say limitation. Our regulations say limitation on height and things like that. So does that mean they want us to just throw away our limitations?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, so we approve that for now. I get the checkmark? No? Yes?
Yeah.
Well, well, it's not necessarily, I, I would like to learn more, especially when it comes to wind. You know, if somebody, if somebody comes in and applies for a wind farm, is that promoting energy efficient pattern? Are we looking at simply residential uses? And does a residence have a wind farm? And that's, that's a big consideration.
Yeah, that would be, right.
That, that's something that would impact the neighborhood and, and the quality of life for neighbors. So that, I would like to know more about that. So I think Kim is suggesting we read the language and then at another time go back and examine each, what he says? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to clarify that.
I know what I thought we should do. You know, some things are no problem at all. If you look at stuff like that, that's kind of extreme thinking about a wind farm in Roxbury. But technically it's, it could be a threat. So we'll check that off with a question mark. Is that right?
Yep, yep. Thank you for clarifying.
All right. 15 to retain the rural character Roxbury, which includes, well, we've rewritten, that is not applicable, right?
So this, this actually is, when it's been black, I believe that's, it already exists. And so the only change is at the end where it says tree lined roads and dirt roads and then taking off and low density. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's our understanding that these are in the regulation and these would be the changes.
Correct.
Is this where we?
Because of the new statute.
Is 15 also has to add horizon lines?
Uh, no, you don't have to because the word character has the definition now.
Oh, right, right.
Well, that word character piggybacks in on our new definition, which is our definition section.
Yep. So you don't, you don't have to put that in everywhere where it says character.
Okay.
There would be a lot of overlap with this one though, too.
We don't have, we can cross this one out because we have made provisions for character. So this one should be not applicable?
No, no, you have to leave it in and then you can look, what, what we're, what we're doing is we're adding a definition for character so that people can go then to the back of the regs to make sure they have a full definition of what that character means.
I'm not reading character right now. I don't have it open, but so our character would probably have more specifics than this one paragraph, probably.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that, and that's where I might see the conflict because as in we, what we just did before, to retain, retain the rural character, character by weak, by definition of these regulations. Of Roxbury, which includes, so it's pretty much saying the same thing.
Right. Yeah, that's a good point. So we can put a question mark there, see if we need that whole thing.
Okay.
We reviewed it with a question mark. Number 16, to consider the impact or permitted land uses on a contiguous municipality and regional planning area in which Roxbury is located.
Perfect.
Yep.
Now, does that, do we cover that by going to the Northwest Hills Council of Government?
By law, we, we have to notify our contiguous municipalities on certain changes, which we do now. Right.
So that's not applicable because we have in our regulations.
No.
No, this is all new.
This is all new. All the red is new.
The red is all new. We don't have these. These, these would be added because of the statute.
Gosh, I thought I read something similar to that. All right. So is that just being polite to our neighbors? But the state's making it a law.
No, but we have to do it already. So it's just stating that it's, and now it's in there saying that we, because we have to do it anyway. We've had to do it.
All right, so we just welcome that in.
Yep.
Not even think about it.
Nope.
All right. To address these, to address significant disparities in housing needs and access access to educational, occupational and other opportunities. Isn't that ongoing with the P O C D and the steering committee?
Yes. But again, this is the start of our zoning reg, so we just have to, has to be stated in the beginning and then it supports what already exists, which is the section on affordable housing and elderly housing.
So I think that's what we're already doing, basically.
Right.
Well, this is a harmless thing to let.
Yeah. Yep.
So question that, we'll check that off. 18, provide for the development of housing opportunities, including opportunity from multifamily dwellings consistent with soil drain infrastructure capacity for all residents in this valley. And the planning region in which Roxbury is located is designated by the Secretary of the Office of Policy and Management under section 16.
Yeah, so that's more to what you were talking about. And this was passed in that general section of the state about multifamily dwellings.
16A-4A, I've seen that somewhere. Kim, is that in your steering committees?
Uh, we are talking about that, but again, it's a plan. It's not a mandate.
This says to provide for development opportunities. Not a, not a plan. Yours is.
Yeah, this is different. So this is, this is opening the door for the zoning regulations to change to allow multifamily dwellings.
But if it's already, if it's already signed into law, why would we have to, I mean, that would be just something that we do, but we, but this would make it mandatory.
Yes, that's correct.
Which.
Don't we already provide that with the accessory dwelling statute?
I believe the definition of multifamily in Connecticut is different than accessory housing. And that's where, that's where the problem comes in, Chris.
Right, right.
But if you consider what the target is, the target here is the larger municipalities.
Right.
The state of Connecticut isn't going to look at a town of 2,100 people and say, you know.
Their jurisdictional blanket, their umbrella.
Yes, yeah, that's the, the statement currently, but realistically, even Jocelyn has explained the distinctions between the goals and the new, you know, the new regulations. But, you know, we have to be, we do have to be concerned about looking at the definition of multifamily. Multifamily in Connecticut, I believe it's three in the same household.
It's pretty much common walls.
I'm sorry?
Commonwealth.
Commonwealth, right, but I believe it's three or more.
Sure.
So, you know, somebody got to come along and want to build a bunch of.
I hear, I hear a concern, this is like a toe in the door, a toe holes.
Yeah.
It's an opening.
Yep.
It might not mean anything for the next 10 years, but could, you know, we don't want things biting us.
Well, okay, so if we, Bernhard Meadows, aren't those three units together in one building?
Oh, yeah.
So we already have multifamily dwellings. So, um, I think we, you have to look at what this means. I guess, you know, we put a question mark and this is a really great conversation to have with all of this, this stuff coming up, but it says to provide for the development of housing opportunities, including opportunities for multifamily dwellings. I don't know the answer, but it seems to me that if you provide, there's ways to think about what that, what that means to provide for the development of housing opportunities. You know, we have. You know, we have some in town now. It doesn't mean that the zoning regulations have to all of a sudden say, in every zone, we have to allow multifamily dwellings. I don't think. I'm not positive.
I just have a problem with the word mandatory coming from Hartford. And, uh, we, I always felt that Roxbury zoning, we zoned for Roxbury. And I have a problem with, uh, Hartford telling us how to run our town.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, okay. And as soon as we start discussing this, we're accepting them telling us what to do. And, and, and mandatory means really nothing because a lot of things were mandatory that got totally ignored. And, uh, they just throw that out there as a, um, heavy terminology that you guys better do this or all hell's going to break loose.
And is, is that, are we guaranteed that they can't call our bluff ten, ten years down the road?
Well, when you, you talk about what, not giving us money for something?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, then we have to raise our own money for what we want to have. You know, that's, it's a threat. Um, I don't know. Some of them are good ideas, but Roxbury zoning is rock, zoned for Roxbury. And, uh, they're telling us what to do and it's hard for me to take it.
Well, that's why I said this, what we're looking at here is, uh, we can look at it objectively because Roxbury is Roxbury. It's not our subjective feeling. Roxbury is a country town with no infrastructure. It is, it's fact. Objectivity is a fact. So we're looking, it's a fact that Roxbury is Roxbury and it's not new in New Haven. So.
I think we're doing pretty good, but.
I think, you know, this is, some of this, we'll just need some clarification from the town attorney to, to make sure, I believe that these are in here because they have to be in here. And if you look at them, there are lots of these things that we're already doing. And it doesn't, you know, it's not saying, you know, it just says to promote. So like the next one, let me just jump to the next one, to promote housing choice and economic diversity in housing, including housing for both low and moderate income households. Our zoning regulations already have affordable housing in them. Section nineteen, I believe, and the elderly housing. So we, we are already promoting by having it in the regulations. You know what I mean? So I think what you're, what we've all said before is that people aren't coming to Roxbury because it's not cost effective for them to be building these units. And we have no control over the price of property and building supplies. So, um, I think it says to promote. So again, I believe we already do it.
Well, at the first time, we have a guarantee that it's not feasible to do. No builder is going to come in because
Right.
they're not going to lose two hundred percent of their money. This
Right.
If, uh, the infrastructure and the cost of land, as you said, and the cost of building, it's just.
And I think, you know, and I agree, I, I don't, you know, I, I have some issues with this, the state, and I guess, you know, we could have all been more active and voicing our opinions when this was up on the docket, right? So, um.
Yeah, this did come up a few years back. I can remember.
Yep.
People, he lost some planning and they got this, um, uh, document five, six years ago that this was coming and Jocelyn says, oh my God, you're going to have to do it. You're going to have to do it. And regional planning, regional zoning is what the word was, regional zoning. So we had to zone just like Watertown and, and Plymouth and Thomaston. And we all said, no, we're not going to, but it didn't go, they're not going to listen. And this was promoted by, I believe, the governor's wife. Nothing against that, but that's where it started.
That was the former governor?
Um, I, I take that back. Um, the mayor's wife in Hartford.
Oh, okay.
She was behind the whole thing of regionalized zoning. And which one size doesn't fit. We said that five years ago. But anyway.
That's a fact, period. Objective fact.
Yeah.
So should we? Oh, table, table these things and run these by Gail or what we can strike and what we can.
I would go through, just like you're doing, Bill. I'd go through the whole thing, word for word. But I would be, um, I would use the, the striking pen more frequently.
Well, I think we have to make sure that we can, you know what I mean? So.
Why can't we? We're in charge of this town.
Not, no, we are.
Well, when that, when they take away that from Roxbury zoning, then that's wrong.
Well, the section one has always come from the state. So it's, we've already been had to include things that the state required.
No, anyway.
So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Oh, I totally, I, some, it's, I just take offense to the fact that we're being told how to run our town.
Yeah.
Especially one of the greatest towns.
I have something to read. According to the Open Communities Alliance, uh, based out of Hartford. They, they are spearheading a lot of the initiatives. They have listed here, component two, make municipalities fair housing obligations enforceable. The new bill does not simply require municipalities to provide for and promote these elements of fair housing, but it creates enforcement mechanisms to be used if they fail to do so. Governor's Bill five oh four five requires municipalities to demonstrate their compliance with these requirements. A municipality that fails to do so shall be ineligible for discretionary state funding. Therefore, the new bill does not, uh, not only creates a more affirmative obligation uh, for municipalities to promote fair housing through zoning regulations, but it adds clear incentives allowing the state as a whole to fulfill its federal obligation to affirmatively further fair housing and promote greater economic vitality across the state of Connecticut. So in that light, that there, that's the threat that you might lose discretionary state funding. But when I read that, the first thing I thought of is we can actually prove to the state of Connecticut that we have been moving toward a diversity of housing and offering um, uh, alternative housing, but it doesn't have to look like what a municipality's multifamily would look like. So I think, I think we're pretty safe in that regard of not losing funding.
I agree.
And also give me the number on the funding they provide, provided Roxbury in the past.
Well, you would know that better than I.
Not a lot.
So, um, can you, um, maybe give that info to Karen so we could all get it or where you found that?
Sure.
Thanks, Kim. I was just going to ask Elaine to do that.
Yeah.
Can you send that to me in an email, Elaine?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
The source that you're using there.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Cause I, I couldn't take it all down. So it's on tape.
No, no, I'll just send you the whole thing.
Thanks. I appreciate that.
Yeah. And I think, you know, while we're, you know, we're reading through all these, it's, I think we're learning about them, you know, and you know, whether it's check, mark, yes or no, or whatever, I, with all the new ones, I have lots of questions. So for me, it's all question marks and I want to understand, you know, how it's interpreted, um, and the town attorney has to be one that can legally, that can defend us, you know, that's important. Um, so just making sure it's written in a way that's defendable and that we understand and that we see if it's something, I'm reading a lot of these and thinking, we do a lot of this already. So that's.
You know, keep in mind one thing, I just, I'm, I'm sorry to keep interrupting and all that and it's not my position anymore. But, uh, how about these towns like Bethlehem that doesn't even have zoning?
I know, right.
What are they doing?
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, no clue.
Up in Bethlehem, they have a lot of those underground crisis centers that they've built.
That's their answer.
Rather than, um, aimlessly wander through these things, should we take the last, uh, twenty seven, the last ten of these things and sit down with Gail?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good, good idea personally.
Get her to give these things a score.
Yeah.
No.
Advertising signs, one point, three point, regulate the height, size, location, brightness of advertising signs and billboards. Oh, you gotta be kidding me.
I know, I, yeah.
We don't have a stoplight.
I know. So, you know, if that has to be in it, then it says and, so there's something missing there.
Three by five feet.
Yeah. Yeah.
Two by three.
Yeah.
Foot set back from the road.
Okay.
Well, we'll take, uh, we'll take, we'll, we'll stop right now and take eighteen through twenty seven and have a talk with Gail.
Good.
Aimlessly hypothesize and wander through these things.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
So that's Gail. All right. So want to discuss this section one anymore tonight?
No.
To be perfectly honest.
Oh, sorry. That was too blunt.
We do have one more lengthy thing to talk about section. Zone A is, it's always on the agenda and nothing ever seems to happen. Say a few words, it might even interject something right now about zone A. So Kim, you have to talk about the correction, section four point three point six, whatever that is, and toss in a few comments about zone A.
Okay. So zone A, um, I have Jimmy Pearl but doing a remake of Bill's colorful meets and bounds map. Because he's pulled in the, uh, the new assessor map so that it's updated and then the colors are removed. Because when we do decide, you know, that we're ready to present this, it has to be just the clear cut, what's currently in zone A, and then what would be added, added to zone A through the change in the meets and bounds. So then we can talk about that. I just wanted you to know that that was in the works. Because we actually are going to use that for the, um, the housing steering committee as well for that plan. And, um, that was great because we could do two things at once. So I just wanted you to be aware that that was on.
Yeah.
And, uh, you, when I was looking up and I, and I don't have any of this right, I'm sorry, I couldn't find where I found it, but it was the whole meets and bounds thing, it was interesting because everybody used to use what we do currently use, which is the circle and the monument. And they changed it. It was back in the seventeen hundreds because people kept moving the monument to make what they wanted. And they realized, well, that's not working. I just, I thought that was kind of interesting. So the whole meets and bounds became the way in which people started to delineate.
One thing I'd like to throw out and, and, uh, changing the circle to meets and bounds. I don't think, uh, as far as zoning is concerned, if zone A grows in size and gets bigger, that's a plus versus making it smaller. So if certain properties become zone A versus zone C, I think that's advantageous. So I'd like to see zone A on a slightly get grow, not diminish.
Yeah. So it's going to be, um, we're, the map that Jimmy's doing will show, just like Bill's did, it had the gray areas that showed anything where the circle intersected a property. Those become part of zone A. And so you can then see the change in the size. And then we can, I, you know, Bill knows this, I'm sorry, I'm speaking for you here, but you know, uh, then those, that discussion, we can have exactly that discussion.
And there is certain properties that have just a tiny, teeny bit in zone A and they have a humongous munch in zone C.
Right.
And we have to decide whether that's going to become an issue or not.
Right.
There's a couple of properties that really, only a couple. I've looked at this map numerous times.
Yeah.
But, um, it might not be a problem.
Yeah, right.
You know. The regulation says that the more restrictive, um, zoning prevails, doesn't it though?
Right.
Yeah. Last week or last month.
Okay. Since the establishment of four acre zone, if I'm in zone A and I get downgraded from three acres to the more restrictive, my whole piece of property becomes four acres. I'm not really happy about that because that diminishes, decreases the value of my property.
Well, right now, it, it, he's right, it's right that when it goes through and a majority is in the more restrictive area, that's the way it is now. If we add it into zone A, then they can, you know, divide it into smaller lots. But that, that's a whole discussion that we can have.
Right.
And when we see visually what actually takes place in that change, if we add them in to A.
It really has been restricted because we don't have a way to put the big map out in front of us at the same time. We need, we need to have the big table to really talk about this, you know, with any understanding. So again, zone A will be on next month's agenda and will keep being there till we have a big map to look at on a big table.
May I clarify? Thank you. Uh, Kim, what you just said. So if I, if I have a large lap, the majority in C and a portion in A and I um, agree to go into A, does, and, and we change our zoning, uh, requirements. So all of that is allowed to be, uh, built on smaller lots?
Correct.
That would be correct.
Uh, I, then I would really want to know what we were talking about. And thank you.
That kind of leads us to why they made a circle in the first place.
Yeah, that's exactly right, Elaine.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
I thought, you know, having that map without the colors and just having, you know, because we can, like, for both documents, which is great, or both uses.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's two point three point five.
Okay.
Where the boundary between zone B and zone C or, no, zone A and zone C divides the lot, use the entire lot shall be governed by the more restrictive conditions applicable to each of the zones.
Did you say two point three point five?
It's two point three point four for zone A and C, uh, point five between B and C.
Okay.
Well, but, but that, what we're talking about, Chris, is the, uh, the possibility that the more restrictive would then become all of C. Because if we were to change lap size, lap requirements in A, then the more restrictive would be C.
Well, if, if we, if we went to meets and bounds, we'd have to rewrite that regulation anyways because it would be a moot point.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Well, that was more than I thought we talked about zoning. Uh, Kim, did you, did I miss four point three point six?
No, I, I didn't do it yet. I can do it now. So, uh, Jocelyn Ayers in the, for the housing steering committee, she contacted me because she's our consultant for that, um, plan. And she said, so I was going through your regulations and you have a regulation for affordable housing, you have regulations for elderly housing, but in the permitted uses section, only elderly housing is listed and affordable housing isn't listed as a permissible use, permit. Permitted use. And so I was like, oh, that's an oversight. Because everything that's in our regulations is also in permitted uses. And so it was an oversight, I believe, when they did them. They did them at about the same time, um, together. And I believe it was when Bernhard Meadows was being proposed. So I, I don't know, I had asked the question um, to Bill and Karen, when I, when this came up to me. I don't know if this is something that has to go to a public hearing to add it. I mean, it's something that's supposed to be in there and it's not in there.
My guess would be it would have to go to a public hearing.
Okay, because it's a.
But I would check that with Gail.
Yeah.
It's, it's interesting. How can it go to a public hearing? We already have Bernhard Meadows.
Submitted into that.
Oh, affordable housing.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I, I would think.
It's already there. And the other one should have been right next to it.
Yeah.
Because they did them at the same time.
I, I would think in the interest of transparency and, um, and, and the more solid approach would. and, and the more solid approach would probably be to go to a public hearing because eventually someone might not understand why that change was made. So public hearing would get that change on record.
But there's a possibility she may say it's just an administrative change that we could do.
Right, so. So it's just, it's, you know, we could advertise, we can talk about it publicly and, you know, that's what we're doing right now, because anybody look at this, at this meeting, but, you know, I think we'll just find out from, um, Gail, what we're supposed to do.
By all accounts, it should have been done at that time.
Right, right. So it was a good catch on her part, I think.
It was.
Yeah. Yep.
All right. Chairman's report. There's no time for a chairman's report now. I get running at the mouth here. Uh, it just, I'll say, remember next week, next month, we have a public hearing. On character. So, uh, communications, so any other questions, ask the chairman? Communications are on. Take a motion to adjourn this meeting? Jim?
Uh, motion to adjourn, Celtics are on at nine.
Second?
I second.
All in favor of adjourned the meeting?
Good night all, thank you.
Good to see you.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you.
Town hall next month, right?
I think that's where we're headed, don't you, Bill? You think that?
What's that?
Meeting next month?
We have to, we have to jump in, we've got to do it. All right, see you next.
Going to make that break, right?
Town hall.
Okay. Good night.